Agenda review and disposition, anything to add to tonight's agenda?
No, Mr. Chair, I do need the non-public just for one co-curricular nomination.
Minutes of December 3rd, 2018, I'll indicate a motion to accept a statement.
So moved.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
So will you jump to the floor number one? I like I knew you would.
Just thanks for another great calendar year for all the work you guys do, much appreciated. Just I haven't been to a lot of these board meetings lately, but I just wanted to ask questions about in particular. I appreciate that all the efforts that the school board and the school does for the tier three students and all the help that they can be provided, but I wanted to bring to the board's attention again if there's any effort, if there's any money in the budget, if money can be moved to help as Principal Flynn puts it, the beyond students, providing them with more support for the students that get a little boring in class, providing them with challenges, anything of that nature? I'm just wondering if there's been any thought to that or just have any efforts made towards that?
I mean, what we see when we walk around the building with the class sizes and the differentiation, the way it's the classroom teacher instructionally sets things up after we do benchmark assessments, informative assessments, really almost personalizing and individualizing for students as opposed to doing a whole class lesson. So and students have with the project-based learning have a lot of opportunities to push it farther and go beyond in a lot of those projects. So that's in general how we approach, but we also have some, you know, some small pockets where we do have opportunities to really enrich. And then, you know, once students get into fifth and sixth grade, there are in the middle school, there are things like the math team, the Nino-RyMo, there's a, there are a lot of other ways for students to get that enrichment. So that's what we have in place right now, but I can, I can go into more detail.
I mean, Mike, if you're looking for if there's more funding available to be able to do something like that, this was not the year to, you know, to find any extra dollars anywhere, a pretty very bare bones budget as it is.
Well, even if it's one of the opportunities that don't require funding, you know, it was something that the school did with the high school students, their honor society has students where there are any possibility of reaching out to them, reaching out to professionals in the community to help to provide other opportunities, further opportunities for enrichment.
Julie, I sat in on a meeting at the high school today, and I think that the honor society is coming your way to see what spring project you want to do. They talked about the, the work with the kindergartners last year and the art project.
Right.
So I think that Kate Donahue's headed your way for the second semester of the high school year with those kids.
That'd be great.
That's just an update.
And we do have, we do have some regular community members who do come in and provide it enrichment. I know, I know that you've been in yourself. So we have an economics club in place that's a volunteer basis. We have a scientist who comes into fifth grade and works with students on a regular basis, and those are students who have shown that they are beyond beyond, so.
And Mike, the position that Julie Panis has, that's above and beyond what anyone in this region does in a K through A level. That's unheard of. So, you know, that's, that's a serious financial commitment. And again, the funding has always gone to class size and Julie's position. So I think when you really look around this region, there's a real commitment to everything we possibly can do here.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not belittling what Mrs. Panis does. I think the breadth that she exposes the kids to in all the grades is, like you said, is beyond what anybody could really do. So I commend her on that, but I'm just wondering that there's, you know, being a part of the university, there's a lot of cluster-based approaches that the university's always promoting, especially as of late, and I'm wondering, could the school benefit by reaching out to the university and say, hey, listen, do you have anybody interested in this? Maybe work with the math department to help students with math, the writing department, yeah, you said you were at a meeting with the high school students about art, or they did something with the...
No, I was at an administrative meeting where Kate Donahue's program was, had told the principal's office that they were going to be contacting the Plymouth Elementary School for second semester for the National Honor Society students. We are engaged with Dr. Mary Eric's program at the university, the Community Outreach Center. Ethel Gady's in our office, and the principals do work with Mary Eric and that group.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Be a little more aggressive with them. If you want to have more subject matter, a broader or more diverse subject matter that the kids can be exposed to here, just please be aggressive with them. Say, listen, we want this, and then ask them, do you have specific faculty in this field that can help out, that will be willing to help out? And I'm pretty sure with the initiatives that the university's taking in terms of cluster-based projects, you will have more than your share of volunteers stepping forward. So I would recommend that.
Okay, thanks.
Who else you see there? Good.
All right, I'm gonna bring up something else that I keep bringing up every year. Last year, the school worked with Professor Harrington and her grad students with the French club, and as far as I can tell, it was a pretty, pretty successful after-school It was kind of in line with what I've been saying right from the beginning, since I started coming to these board meetings, is to offer French as an alternative language that the students can be exposed to, and I'm wondering if that avenue's gonna be pursued any further or if it's gonna be expanded upon.
I've talked with Kate. I'm hoping that she'll join us. She brings her French students who are interested in working with our students. So I think there's some dependent, you know, some things that are dependent on what happens at the university, but I think, I think, I know Kate's up for it, and we are definitely up for it. So and that usually happened, it was like April in Paris, we'd had, it was in, it took place in April, and it was an after-school program that students could learn some French. You know, it's great.
I think something like that, if it could be expanded upon, would really benefit the students if they went for that brave Montreal trip, use what they actually learn something that they can actually use up there.
Thanks, Mike. All righty. Principals report. Julie?
I have included a copy of a letter to parents announcing upcoming plans for statewide assessments. We will be taking the SAS, the statewide assessment system in math, English Language Arts in grades three through eight this spring, most likely in May. Students will also take the science in grades five and eight. Last year, we were a tier one PACE school, which meant fulfilling accountability requirements through curriculum-embedded performance assessments as well as other competency activities. This year, we've opted to continue with PACE but at a tier two level, which will continue our access to really outstanding performance assessments, a network of other innovative schools, as well as some really strong professional development. So we're looking at the best of kind of both, both worlds. We believe strongly in the process of performance assessments, that students should be able to show what they know and can do, so we'll continue working with performance assessments as a, as basically the umbrella for what we do. In November, we screened all of our kindergartners and any new first graders for dyslexia according to the new New Hampshire law, and in December, we had some great meetings with parents of students who, whose students did not make the benchmark in two or more of the indicators. Those meetings were outstanding, and I'm really glad we're in the process of doing that. Some of the families who have older students said, you know, I wish we had done this earlier. So, you know, a new law, it's actually something that we have put into action, and feels, it feels like we're making the right changes. So we're excited about that. We, we're gonna plan to come back together with the families in February when we have parent-teacher conferences to review their progress and adjust the plan. Goodwill to All was here at Plymouth Elementary School. On Thursday, December 6th, our middle school students, our student council held its annual community service day. Some of the activities included little hats, big hearts through the American Heart Association, where they created tiny red knit crocheted for babies born in February. So it was really great. You know, one of the classrooms was all set up as almost like a little factory, and the kids actually enjoyed that particular activity. They did a give-a-hoot where they went through Plymouth and picked up trash and tried to beautify the area. They did baking for the community closet, and they also helped out with Operation Santa Claus, which they do every year with the fire department. And it's, it was, again, really well organized. It lasted for two hours from 12:30 to 2:30. The student council executive board and the advisors are to be commended for their important work and for taking community service to a very high level. They, again, had a reflection part of the day, and students clearly understood the significance of being part of a community and enjoyed the process of giving of oneself, and wanted to congratulate our beautiful stars in kindergarten, first, second, and third grades for their winter concert. A highlight for me was a beautiful song that I had never heard before called "Old Toy Trains," and Mr. Stevens, our music teacher, shared with the audience that he remembered singing that song in first grade, and our kiddo was singing it. It was really a pretty song. The concert also included classics. There's nothing like seeing second graders sing "All I Want for Christmas Is My Two Front Teeth." Many need. So, so thank you to Mr. Stevens for an enjoyable event. And also on December 6th, we had a fourth grade team. Mrs. Perkins, Mr. Mercer, and Ms. Watchkin invited parents to attend an informal workshop on mathematics and homework. They focused explicitly on the multiplicative strategies, and as Mrs. Perkins eloquently said, students are no longer just memorizing facts, they are applying different strategies to understand the thinking behind the arithmetic. And each teacher presented a lesson with an explanation for the homework to follow. Parents were really thankful for the conversation and the access to teachers, and Team Four continues to host that kind of parent night. So it was just a, a great, like, oh, that's why you're doing this kind of math work. We have upcoming dates, we have two more winter programs, so hopefully this Wednesday will be the 4th, and then January 16th. January 21st, we have No School for Martin Luther King Junior Day. January 23rd, we have Tiger coming from Plymouth State University, which is an outstanding anti-bullying program. January 28th, we have a really important grade eight move-up day, move-up night over at Plymouth Regional High School. And February 7th, mark calendars, we have our winter concert for grades four through eights.
I have a question for you, Julie. So the eighth graders do a service for two hours. Has that ever been brought, like, has anyone ever said, let's do that K through eight in a different time?
Yeah, you know, this would be the year to do that. We have little pockets, you know, like the first grade does the, they collect food can items, and grade five does the wreaths across America. So there's a lot of service activities going on, but this is like the big, big one. It reminds me of what we do for Earth Day. That is a school-wide activity where we get everybody involved. We could look into doing something like that.
Yeah.
I know that that's a goal of this student council, to get people to do more K8. Thank you.
That's great.
All set?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll go back to starting off with our Elks Hoop Sheet. Originally, we had the, back here on Thursday, December 13th, was our, our first round with our qualifiers, and again, from Plymouth Elementary, we had a few of our students who actually placed that evening. In the eight to nine age group, Matt Valenti took second place. In the 10 and 11 group, Luke Diamond was first, and in the 12 and 13 group, Kaylee Merrickfield finished second. So all of those, the first-place finishers, which at that point would have been Luke, moved forward and competed this past Sunday, January 6th, at the New Hampshire North District Championship, which was held in Claremont. And any of the winners that came out of that would advance to the state championship round in Concord. So Luke represented us as the first-place finisher, and actually Iris Lamerow got the call. She was an alternate for her eight and nine age group, and so she gladly took it. And so this past Sunday, Luke ended up finishing second overall in his age group with 18, shooting 18 out of 25, and losing just by one point to the, the first-place finisher. And Iris had a great showing and ended up finishing second overall at that district championship. So a real strong showing by the both of them. Our winter sports teams, well underway with the seasons, with the exception of our Nordic Ski Team. Hopefully, they open this Saturday at Conville High School in Peterborough, and it was a little disheartening to look down at the fields out there over to the holiday break when we took on a lot of that rain, but it was a good sight. I saw the groomer out there today and last week. So we're hoping maybe with this storm coming towards us that we get more snow than rain on the trails for our skiers. Our five and six boys and girls basketball teams had six games under their belts before this evening. The girls stood at four and two, and the boys are six and O. We hosted Camden this evening, and both teams improved their records with the girls winning 18 to 11, and the boys had an exciting, they were tied 22 to 22, but we ended up taking off and winning 36 to 22. So a fun game tonight for them. On the seventh and eighth grade basketball side, the teams, same thing, are playing well, facing some tough competition. Boys currently stand at three and four. They've had an exciting overtime win and two close losses to Moltenboro and Kingswood. The girls have a six and one record and hope to avenge their only loss, which is to Kingswood, this coming Friday, January 11th. Our wrestlers have been working really hard also. They opened up on December 10th in Londonderry at the PJ Sora tournament. Overall, as a team, the seventh and eighth graders placed fifth, and we did have seven individuals earn individual placings. Sixth grader Emmett Noseman was first. We had several athletes finish in third, Mason Lassard, Matt Cleary, Jacob Heath, Andrew Como, all our eighth graders, and Frankie McLean, he finished third as well, and James Phipps took a fourth-place finish at that tournament. So great first showing for the, for the guys. Two separate meets on December 13th and January 3rd at the Runlet Middle School in Concord. We have Matt Cleary, Jack Witcher, Jacob Heath, and Jason Vong all win their matches by pin. They saw some great action of those two wrestling against a lot of our bigger schools like Concord and Bedford, Amherst, and Goffstown, so they saw some nice competition. And then really wanted to highlight with, through collaboration with the, the high school wrestling team and that athletic director over there, our wrestlers have had a great opportunity to wrestle at the high school this year, and both PES and PRHS co-hosted Pelham and Kearsas back on December 20th. I think our kids really loved wrestling under the spotlight. If you haven't been over to a high school meet, they're right there out on the mat with the spotlight on them in front of a larger crowd that attended to see both the middle school and the high school competition. So it was a night of some strong matches, again, some pins by Cole Ahern and Jason Vong that evening, and it was really great to see the high school wrestlers all there in the stands, supporting the younger athletes, and the same in return, a lot of our kids hung around and watched the high school kids compete afterwards. So that's been a nice opportunity. I think we wrestle over there two more times, and then we'll be hosting Mascoma here in February. And last thing, weather permitting, our winter team photos are scheduled for tomorrow along with the second round of our baseline concussion testing with John Brule for those students who have not been able to complete that yet. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions?
My counsel question, Mike.
Consent items.
Sorry, am I allowed to ask a question? I just want to ask something about the concussion protocol. Are they doing that in groups, or are they doing the second round for all athletes?
So this second round is for those athletes who have not completed it yet or their timeline has run out. It's, we take it every, every year at the, at the middle school level. At the high school, I think it's every two years, every other year. So, so this grouping, I think in this next round, we have 20 students left, so it's either been that their, their timeframe has run out and we need to get them done again, or they just weren't, like, we had a few students who were absent the last time when we did it.
All right, consent items, claims, and payroll. I have to sign them. Any correspondence?
None, Mr. Chair.
Discussion items, bridge report.
Yes, enclosed in your packet is the bridge inspection report from the, from the state highway engineers, and basically, they look at six bridges in Plymouth, and these are bridges that the school buses cross over, that's why you're getting a copy of this, and no posting recommended means the bridge is in good shape. If it wasn't, they would post for a certain amount of weight, and we've had that before, before a couple of these bridges were actually fixed. So that's just an update on status of the bridges.
Okay. This school year 18 audit letter.
Yes, attached, you have the cover letter from the auditors, which basically, if you go down to opinions, see, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects, and it goes on and on and on. So basically, it's a clean audit, it's there for Michael's signature. If anybody wants a copy of the full audit, or anyone at home wants a copy of it, just email me, and I will electronically send it to you. I'd be happy to do it, because I mean, we only print one of the full report because they're knocking down the doors to get at it, so. But it's certainly available to anybody who wants it.
This school year 20 budget draft and...
Yes, this will be the budget draft two that you have. There are three, three pieces of paper, they're color-coded for you. The pink one is a, is a financial overview comparing last year to this year. The blue is a potential warrant, and you're gonna find that I took a lot of stuff out of the budget, particularly as it relates to the building, and put it in a warrant article to lower the budget and to allow citizens of the community to vote on some projects, seeing that they're paying the bills. And then also, the line item budget, with some minor cuts that Julie and I made, but no, no, no personnel cuts, they were just twiddling around the margins. So we can walk through some of this, and, and let me tell you where we stand and the financial impact of it, and then we'll go from there.
I can copy of the blue one.
The which one?
The blue.
Blue? What do you have, blue, pink, and white?
Thank you. I don't know that I...
You got that?
Eric, what's the status of the greenhouse?
Status of the greenhouse is, the construction is on hold, financing is in place. We're just waiting for the kit, is the kit...
Everything but the two walls, the two door sides are here, they're over at the high school right now being stored. So we're looking at sometime in the spring.
Yeah, John just put an end to it, got what he needed to get done, but the kit was so late in getting here that he just put it off to the side.
The funding is all...
Funding's fine, yeah, the financing piece is fine. Materials are in storage at the high school, it's in one of those containers in the, in the parking lot, just waiting for spring to come, and then it'll be moved out.
The site work and grading, all that's...
It's all done, yeah. Let me walk through this material with you. On the pink sheet, just take a look at the, the increase has two pieces to it, has a revenue shortfall piece and then appropriations increase piece. So if you look through the revenue, under, unreserved fund balance and, and those monies, we're down $163,986, and you can identify those on the revenue sheet, which is the last page of the line item budget. So when you look at unreserved fund balance, catastrophic aid, adequacy aid, and kindergarten aid, 18, 19 versus what's estimated, we're down $136, $163,000. Basically, we have a zero in there for unreserved fund balance. We're not gonna have $126,000 like we had last year. It's not, it's not in the cards. We'll be lucky to break even, quite frankly. So we're, that, that's basically, the beauty of unreserved fund balance is, when you go to set the tax rate, it's your friend. When you go to begin to build the following year's budget, it's not something you want to see because it's money you have to make up, and that's basically either leftover money or excess revenues that, that have come in above and beyond expectation. So those, those are down. When you look at federal funds, that would be National Forest Reserve and Medicaid, that's up a little bit, about $24,000. So that impact is, would be five cents per thousand. The other impact, the 163, as you can see, would take the tax rate up 34 cents per thousand. And then you see total revenue lost, $264,280. That's, that's revenue the previous, from the previous year, so that would have a 59-cent impact on the tax rate. So the tax rate increase of the draft is a dollar and 55 cents per thousand. 59 cents of that is from shortfall in revenue. 96 cents of that is from increased in spending.
That include the teachers?
No, it's including, does not include any warrant articles. Let me walk through the blue sheet with you, which is the warrant articles, and then you can see actually what got pulled out of the first budget that you all gassed at when it got handed out. Article two would be contingency fund for $1,000, and that is by statute, that has to be on a warrant article. Collective bargaining agreement, it's a four-year agreement. The first year is a zero, and that's the year we're, we're in right now. Then 19, 20 is $113,000, 20, 21 is $117, and 21, 22 is $123,000. But this year, you'd be raising $113,982. Article four would be for four movable partitions, classroom walls. We did four last year, and we'd like to do the final four this year. It's a, it's, it's an internal safety concern. I mean, certainly, if we didn't have them, we'd live with it, but at the same time, they're, they're looking at being 30 years old, their lifespan is probably around... Their lifespan is probably around, somewhere around 20. So we'd like to get those out of there. I think Gendeloge was talking to you about them a couple of months ago. So that's, that's on the warrant. Campus resource officer, the Plymouth Elementary share is $28,960. The wording is the same as at the high school. So you can see, this article is contingent upon passage by both the Pembroke Baker Regional School District and the Plymouth School District. Article six, to recoat the protective covering of the roof. And that's $105,000. And that needs to be done within the next few years. You, you'll begin to see it fraying, and, and you don't wanna expose the roof itself to the elements. That's what the protective coating is.
Eric, how often does it have to be done?
About once every 10 years or so.
Okay.
Has a 10-year warranty, Amy.
Okay.
And I think, maybe 10 or 12 years ago was the last time we did it. And security upgrades, this is to see if the school district were able to raise an appropriate sum of $18,000 for the purpose of security upgrades to the front entrance of the building. $14,400 to come from the New Hampshire Public School Infrastructure Fund. And $3,600 to come from taxation. That's for the grant that we wrote for some work in the entry. That'd be doing some bulletproof glass in that entryway and upgrading some video in, in that, that area. Again, you know, the critics would say, you know, well, you know, you've got glass all around the front. And, you know, those projects are meant to buy time. That's what they're meant to do. So I think it's a very worthwhile project. It was approved by Homeland Security, so we have to make a decision, I think, by April 30th, whether we encumber the money or not. So a good time to do it is at, at the district level. And then the final warrant article would be the main budget itself. So it hasn't, it really hasn't changed all that much when you, when you wander through. On the pink sheet, you can see the appropriations, just go down from the revenue. In the 1100 account, we're up about $48,000. That's, that's funding three sections of each grade. Doesn't mean you have to do it. It means that the funding is available based on class size determinations that you'll make. Whether you wanna fund three sections of each grade. The 1210 account, special education, you can see that's up about $300,000. The 2321 account, that is superintendent's office. And that is an agreed-upon move from a position moving from the high school budget into the SAU budget for the facilities director. That's an assistant facilities director. Right now, it's funded in the high school. So Plymouth gets savings coming out of the high school budget. They're, they're, they come in the SAU, but, but the money just travels with it. It just has to be accounted for in the SAU budget, rather than in the entire high school budget next door, which is about $15 million. Buildings, 2620, $42,000. That was an oversight when we did the current year budget. We forgot a position. So we're, we're eating a cookie on that this year. So it helped lower the tax rate last year, but we need to fund that position. 2770 is transportation. A small amount of that is local, bless your... Small amount of that is local transportation, the school buses. The majority of that money, approximately $30,000, is special ed transportation. So when you look at all of our accounts on the appropriation side, they're up $462,432. And about, I don't know, just did this the other day.
What was the percentage increase in health insurance, Mark?
14.3.
14.3?
Yeah. And that's a guaranteed maximum. So it could come in lower than that, but not, probably not significantly lower. But it can't be any higher than that. If you look at special ed, special ed transportation, health and dental increases, the amount to 95% of the increase. I mean, that, in those categories, that's what's driving it. There's no going in and ripping out pencils and paper and crayons and things like that. And 95% of these increases are, are in special ed and then the health and dental requirements of the collective bargaining agreement. So overall, when, when a person picks up the budget, they go right to the back. And they look and say, the budget's up $748,712, 16.59%, $1.55 per thousand, without the warrant articles. And again, the warrant articles are there for the community to make decisions as to what they wanna do.
Yeah, warrant articles are roughly 300,000. So, I'll pass. Another 19, 19 cents.
Yeah. One of the things you can do tonight, too, is you can make a determination whether you want these articles on the warrant. So if you decide, yeah, put them all on and see what the community wants to do, or this is a big gulp here, maybe we'll, the roof, for instance, maybe the roof stays for a year. You have, have some freedom with, I think, I think you have some flex with the roof.
We gotta let the town decide.
We already, if I recall correctly, there was a truck proposal that was already pulled from...
That's been pulled completely, yeah.
The truck, the high school didn't support their...
High school didn't support either. And the high school...
That's one thing we had been discussing.
Yeah, and the high school drove the decision on the campus resource officer. I put it in both of the budgets. The high school board pulled it out and said, put it on a warrant article with the community's side, if that's what they want. And it was a discussion about the whole issue over there, so.
Does there need to be any more of that, Dr. Allen? More in terms of, I know warrant language can be tricky, but...
We, we have a sheet filled that, that goes right along with it, particularly for the high school, because they vote in the booth without anyone talking to them. So in the handouts and things, there's a paragraph or two about the background of each of the, of each of the warrant articles.
Any discussion? Questions, remark?
Is there specific things in special ed that are...
Yes, there are programs.
Okay.
Programs for students that we're responsible for that aren't here in this building.
Okay.
That's what's driving the big numbers.
Okay.
There's no new, there's no additional personnel in this building or anything like that.
Any discussion on the warrant articles? What's the flavor? You wanna keep them there for the town, or do you wanna, you wanna hold out on some?
I think we should discuss the roof, if we have time. It's a big, big piece, $105,000. We're looking at the rest of the budget. Mark, you said there's a 10-year warranty on the roof.
Mm-hmm.
Is how old then?
I think it's 10 to 12 years old.
It's been a while since we've done that, with the roof.
It's a, based on my experience with roofing products, it's a lifetime warranty if you recoat it within the prescribed period of time.
I'm not sure if it's the same, but I know other products that I've seen put them of that nature.
I think this was a standalone warranty on the, on the, on the product.
Okay.
Good question, though. But I, the material that John gave me was, I thought it was a standalone.
In movements to another year. Next year, you're gonna be running into the same decreases though in state aid.
Yeah, the state aid that we're really talking about is, it's happening, and it gets more play in bigger districts, is that there was stabilization money available for property poor towns. And we fall into that category. And that money now, over 25 years, is gonna be completely zero. So you'll just be getting adequacy on the number of kids you have in the building. And whether you're a wealthy town or a poor town, good luck, you're on your own. And so that stabilization is coming off at 4% over 25 years. And that's what's happening. To us, it's about $1 million over 25 years that begins to peel away. For cities like Franklin and, and others that you read more about, it's sizable burning in those kind of places, so.
Keep warrant articles a-stated, or you wanna take off the, take off the move for another year?
I'd like to leave them.
You'd leave them?
Yeah, my, my thinking is, let's present them to the voters and let the voters decide. What was the discussion around the CRO, Mark, from the, if you can share it?
At the high school? Yeah, it's, yeah, I certainly can share it because all of those meetings are, are televised. The conversation was that there, there's a safety officer that's funded at the high school. It's a position, Todd Austin is currently in that position. And reviews, one of the assistant principals, Randy Cleary, very much in those roles. So they were saying, you know, we do, you know, luckily, and thank God, we've done a good job in, in, with the relationships within the buildings between Randy, Todd, and the kids. And they have. And they have a very good working relationship with the Plymouth Police Department along with the other sending-town police departments. You'll always see cruisers over there. And usually, there's nothing wrong, other than they're communicating with each other. So nobody wanted to say no to this sort of thing. But at the same time, the sense was, with their budget, you know, this is, this is getting pretty pricey, $15 million for a regional high school with 700 kids. And the way we tax ourselves, and other than holderness, there aren't a lot of wealthy towns over there with lakes and things like that. So they, they settled on, put it on a warrant article. See, if the folks want it, happy to have it, but let, let the folks decide. And that was, that was the, kinda the, where we got to after the conversation.
So will this person at the high school stay if we, if this passes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. Because the campus resource officer, as envisioned with both buildings, would be a lot of outdoor security. I mean, that's the sense that we got, you know, we wanna not have a person charging down the hill and getting in here. So the focus would be security overall for the outside of the campus, but certainly work with both buildings. And both buildings have terrific relationships with the Plymouth Police Department. It's just, it would be us that be that extra, extra person committed here, rather than being in the community and then coming here because they've been asked to come here.
Any other business? I'm privileged on the floor, too. Are all these warrant articles, just because I'm not very familiar with them, do they expire every year? Are they long-term commitments that the town people are voting on, or...
Five years, sure. Yeah, the collective bargaining agreement, Mike, when you see three years posted like that, you're, you're making a three-year commitment. You're gonna...
Sorry, with regards to the other ones, like, obviously, the school roof is not gonna be recoated every year.
Right.
But some of the other warrant articles on here, as well as existing warrant articles, there's one for the Parks and Rec, correct?
No, that, that, last year, there was a warrant article for the after-school program. And it was, it was passed for $30,000. And we got a real sense from the community that that's what they wanted. So that $30,000 is in the line item budget. So it's, that, that's a great example of something that was in and is, was on a warrant article and now is incorporated in the budget. If we, historically, if the superintendent's office and the board gets a sense that's what the community wants, then we spare them voting on it every year and just put it in the line item budget. But if there's one-time things that come along every once in a while, like the roof, like these folding petitions, you know, it really is the community's fault. They're paying the bill on it, so.
The resource officer position, if it were supported at a high level by the community, it's likely that would probably go in as a line item in next year's operating budget. So there would be a recurring cost if that were to be supported, unless the boards chose to put it in as a, as a warrant article in the future. But it could, you know, if it's, if it's supported well, it would probably go in as a budget line item. Well, it's the same thing with the CBA, too.
Yeah.
So the CBA would be a warrant article now.
Yeah, the security upgrades are one-time, yeah.
Little partition, one tiny little, yeah. Well, thank you all. Entertaining non, a motion to go into non-public session?
Second.
Okay.
Aye.